Mr. Mayor, thank you. Council members, thank you for having me. As you can see, a couple of the significant calls for service that we had for the month. We had a personal at the food line where the individual did end up finding the popper book in the bathroom, but stated that hundred dollars was stolen from inside. The popper book, we looked at videos, we couldn't find a suspect. In October twenty ninth, stopped an individual riding a moped, very intoxicated, charged that person with DUI, second offense. And then on the thirty first of October, we met with a person regarding unauthorized use of a motor vehicle. And we were able to obtain unauthorized use for that individual. Still have not been able to take him into custody yet. Community engagement events, Patrick's council meeting. Was held last month at the Methodist, Scottsville Methodist Church. And we participated and helped the town tours on Friday and Saturday. I think that went okay, didn't it? Mr. Mayor, you didn't have any issues? And then on the thirty first, we had the truck or train event at the police department, had a lot of kids and families turn out for that event in the town. You see our auxiliary officers donated about fifty-five hours of their time for your mom. Yes, sir, I will. They do save us a lot of money. We attended the quarterly V-Dot meeting here at Town Hall. Now, the town administrator and I met regarding the Fleet Street. And discuss some final solutions for motor vehicle and pedestrian traffic. Javier, did we need to talk about that any further?
For Fleet Street? Fleet Street, I shared through email, and unless there's any question in the council. I shared through email our determination of Fleet Street.
Well, I saw that there were boundary issues, we resolved the boundary issues, but there's still the flow of traffic from Saturday. I still think that's. That's, you know, it gets very crowded in there and hard to move around. I'm just afraid at some point, it's a safety issue. Are there other steps we can do besides, you know, now that we have boundaries clearly laid out, we know where the street is coming in? Can we do, are there additional steps we can take to make that area safer?
I think the only other thing that would possibly could do would be move the food truck.
Yeah, I saw that was a proposal.
Take some of the, you know, pedestrian traffic out of that area there where they. They order food, where the vendors and merchants come from the farmer's market.
Yeah, because I was thinking about, you know, can we make that one way on the Saturdays during market time? Can we remove the vendor trucks from the market so that we have additional parking for people, so there's a little bit more elbow room for people coming and going?
I think that will be a question to maybe.
Market manager?
To maybe work with us and address.
Yeah, so I started talking with her with the idea of a change in movement there for next. So I could.
So can we follow up on that?
Yeah, I can get a dog here and let me talk about it in the spring.
I looked at this past Saturday, there wasn't as much traffic there Saturday as it had been.
Yeah, no, it's standard season, right? So it's more the high season where we see the traffic.
As everybody saw, I showed you pictures, but we were able to get our newest addition to the police vehicle fleet. It was marked up today and it is all set. So it's, it's operational. I think we can go ahead and close that going out. I did the tally and the figures today, get that stuff with Javier, as soon as we can get with the head department, he'll. Send all of the pictures and stuff, notify them, hopefully they'll come down and take a look at it and we can get the reimbursements for that purchase of that vehicle. So hopefully we can go ahead and close that line out. The old spare police car that we had trouble keeping running. We were able to sell that vehicle to the Blue Van and Fire Department. The chief want come by and met with me on that car a couple of weeks ago. Made us an offer. He actually saved us about two thousand dollars in operational costs with decommissioning that thing by unmarking it and taking all the blue and red, the blue lights off. So he's gonna pay for all of that, plus cut a check to the town for the remainder of a thousand dollars. I was like, it worked out pretty good. They help service the town in emergencies and I think we were doing them a good turn. They needed a vehicle for a year or two.
It was a win-win.
And then call for service. Ms. Morris, I think you had asked about the comparison of call for service.
Yeah, it's a significant increase.
And we have seen that since I started tracking the calls for service. But you can see January to October twenty-two, there were six hundred and four call for service in the town. Let me go back at some point here. And thus far, this year it's thousand ninety-three, or it was a thousand ninety-three last year. And then you can see the total, it was twelve hundred this year and seventeen eighty-six overall. And then you can see all of the stats that we break down, all of the different types of call for service. We're handling right at just over seventy-five percent of the call for service in the town.
So when it says extra patrol on the line, I thought that that number is about double. What does that mean? Just general patrolling or is that?
Well, the extra patrols are like businesses that are closed at nighttime, areas where we've had problems in the past, where you're providing those extra patrols, it's more of a preventative measure for business owners.
It's not a call per se, but it is.
Officer initiated generated call.
Okay, gotcha. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I've asked the sergeant to, we're gonna try to recognize him with a plaque and a life-saving award. I'm waiting on being able to do that. Once I get those in here, the council wants me to add one of these meetings to where we can bring them. Should that car is a little bit different, instead of all blue lights on it, it'll be red and blue. You might notice that change. And Radford University did a study on the all blue lights versus the red and blue lights, and the red and blue are safer for the officer and the pedestrians that the officers are out with during stop or anything like that. So that's why that changed. And then a lot of the lights, sirens, all of the features that you would typically do with hand now can all be done on the steering. You don't have to look like a road to have it done. Yes, sir.
I just have one question as a follow-up. It was something I lost another a couple of months ago, we were talking about some thefts in the area. And there were multiple thefts in different counties, and it was supposedly an organized kind of thing. Was there any follow-up on that? I mean, did we get any information?
We did a lot of follow-up on it, work a lot with.
You were working with other counties on that, right?
Palatam was able to charge one of the individuals. And that's because one of their deputies did a stop and identified two of the individuals that were in the car that had stolen checks. But we did, we executed six search warrants, our department did. And we were able to get video photographs of the suspects. But they didn't identify. I mean, white females. Couldn't get a tag number of any of us of the vehicles going through the drive-throughs. And most of the time go through the outer drive-through window. Video doesn't pick up clear enough tags on the cars to get an identification.
So, and I'm assuming that we haven't experienced any other real incidents that.
Hopefully they were just coming through, they've moved on. But they hit from Palatam, Amherst, Charlottesville, Albemarle, Scottsville, Buckingham County, Green Counties, Orange Counties, they were everywhere.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The Chamber of Commerce, the report is brief. We are working weekly meetings while the holiday happening to coordinate town and scan entering the chamber and everything's falling into place, so I will be getting this. Good morning at nine o'clock at the B store, fourth street. Everybody's welcome to come, anybody's welcome to come.
We do. ARB had a fairly normal meeting at the beginning. We approved some stuff for the school coming in as far as design and railings and stuff. There's a temporary fencing they need to put around that field to the right of the building. Just for a safety thing, we gave them a year to put the temporary fencing up and then they have to come back to us with a more, yeah, more permanent solution and something that's a little more sturdy. Yes. And then structurally, ARB had a resignation two months ago or a month ago. So we had to try to fill that vacancy. We did a couple of interviews. And picked one candidate that we'll present to you at the next meeting. And then at the end of the, and after our interviews, the president, Aaron resigned, so we ended up picking a second candidate for recommendation and those will come before council next week. The only thing I'm worried about is one of the people we chose is an architect. And so I don't know if our kind of on-call architect is going to stay on call, if there's another option. He's probably doing us a favor at this point, and I can't speak for him on that, but there might be a third vacancy open here soon.
Any questions for ARB?
Nothing's come across our end here. Glad to see somebody doing something.
Mr. Mayor, we had a update on the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure Cher has contacted you yet, but there's a desire in a month or two to have a joint meeting. Okay, so. Okay, so, so just so the council knows, the planning commission would like to have a joint meeting at some point on being able to talk about where the plans are and. The other thing would be same as you just lost a member of the planning commission, so the whole audience. Don't take the architectural viewpoint along with the mission. And, and overall, main things to do that have been related to conference, and I was kind of doing a push and trying to keep it on track and keep it under the, the plan. And Javier, would you say from the meeting too that that was pretty good, we're kind of on track?
Yeah, we're on track to have a draft by the end of the year, so we reviewed that. That timeline of planning commission last meeting, and then he'll do a short presentation, a short presentation today. A little bit on an update since I think September officially was the last time he spoke to you guys during, I believe, a regular session.
And we talked about whether you all wanted a really long presentation or a nice short update.
You know the answer.
No, it's, he's doing a great job.
But I think we do, we'd like to stick up presentations and take that for financial.
Good, I have some things for you.
Just in general, any questions regarding services from the past?
So I shared a little bit in our staff briefing. But next week we'll present our October financial report and also catch up on our September report, if you guys remember it was on agenda for last month. Beyond that, Melanie and I discussed about trying to have tear-off meetings just to discuss budget in general. So it'll give everybody a refresher on how to analyze our financial statements. And also I can try to arrive the best of my abilities and historical background in recent times. So we'll try to do that in December and then proceed as usual with budget talks, including revenue discussions tonight. Beyond that, I want to make sure that you guys all knew that we have a field day with R and C with our auditors on October tenth. So they should, if they're on time, return back and audit it next year. Everything, one day, everything went smoothly from what they indicated. Beyond that, I'll discuss later about rate reimbursement for the CIG grant, the community investment grant. And also, we need to move forward also on receiving reimbursement on the USDA facilities grant, which is the vehicle that the chief mentioned in his report. So it's just collecting everything together and sending it out to the. For reimbursement. And then beyond that, we started a new invoice review process to increase accountability and increases review between town administrator, the mayor, and town clerk.
Any questions for all there?
There are changes, I'm just a little bit right now, so we don't have all these nice folks who show up tonight, sit around for the next hour, when they get a chance, and say something. This, the, the proposal for the old Sonic building. Javier, if they descend to that, it will take us a moment and have one, this is not a public hearing. We have one representative group, just give an overview of the plans in on the.
All right, so I presented a briefing today included in your tactics. I'll summarize it as briefly as I can for you guys. So in zoning administrator, I had preliminary thoughts with possible applicant and their counsel about the creation of private club, the Rivera Club on one thirty-seven East Main Street, so the may some. The property is zoned commercial within the historic district. In researching the property, I found a conflict in our provisions for our zoning ordinance. So right now, our commercial district states that to have permitted use for, quote, clubs, lodges, civic fraternities, fraternal and patriotic is in our prohibited uses, sorry, buy right section, but also in our zoning ordinance, there's a requirement for special use permits for clubs, lodges, civic fraternal and patriotic. I included in the brief the two sections on it. So reading our section two point seven for our zoning ordinance, it states that whenever there's a conflict between two provisions or not our zoning ordinance, the most stringent and highest standard is determined by the zoning administrator. So after that determination, obviously the most stringent interpretation is your special use permit. But to simplify it, you only have one zoning administrator. So I wanted to bring it up to staff, to council, that staff had reviewed our zoning ordinance, found this inconsistency. My proposed solution is that town council takes steps to cross through one of the either language in the permitted use for the buy right after discussion with town council. That'll provide clarity for staff in administering our zoning and also just clarifying, cleaning up our zoning a little bit. So the easiest approach is to strike, to have a discussion about the zoning ordinances and then have a zoning, a correction like through one of the zoning lines, either by or by or S U P. I want to point out specifically, to keep it short. Or there's no financial considerations in immediacy, but I do want to point out that with our new fee structure, applicants have to pay one thousand five hundred for a special use permit. Beyond that, also in reviewing that section, which is section eleven of our commercial zoning code, I also found that we had a similar conflict in regards to references to fire and rescue squad stations. So one of my other suggestions, if we have time, we can try to clean up that section before before we probably do a larger work of our zoning after our comprehensive plan, which is kind of standard. But I found two, while we're in there cleaning up, I want you guys to consider if we can clean up a little bit. But beyond that, that's all I have to say for.
Okay, so the real thing too is fine right or special use permit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did I miss anything?
Well, it's, it's simply put, we need to repeal one section or repeal the other, take your pick. Probably a consultant may, and he had determined that, that he had no choice under your ordinance has written, so these not the legis, like you all are, but to follow the ordinance, which required him to choose among strictly notification, which would affect the different. At the same time, he determined to bring it to you, if that's what council wants to do, to correct the problem by either amending one, by repealing it, or amending the other one. And that's really what this is clearly properly lies, the town council needs to make a decision. Do you want to allow closed fraternal lives, I can't think of the other. By rights and work with this, or do you want to allow them by special use permit? And at the same time, there, there's another similar conflict, which is a little bit different. I don't want to confuse the issue. But if you're gonna do one, it's easy to do the other, what you want to, and that is that you've got a buy right for what, a fire station and police stations, I guess.
It is.
Fire rescue squads in one section and then some other section, so it has to be by special use permit, so you can fix that up. If you want to, or you can decide just to deal with the issue immediately before.
I don't see any use for discussing the use for that. I'm thinking, meaning the language is not involved with it already in place. For this group, you do that still with the right. Can someone
If we take away the need for special use, could things like gentleman's clubs?
Don't look at us for the use, look into this group and say they have a right. Yeah, you feel me, why they need a special.
To answer your question, there is, as far as I understand, clubs, even including the one they want, they're gonna talk about here in a little bit. That's all state and federally regulated as well. So this would just be the town's take on, so you couldn't open a gentleman's club in Scottsville because it's not state.
Okay, thank you. I understand, there, there's wording in here saying they need a special use permit, and there's wording saying they don't. So my question was simply, if we take away the need for special, I understand that maybe this club shouldn't need a special use permit. If we take away that wording, what does that open up in the future? That's what my question is.
That would be my question too, and what, what could potentially come down the road, especially in the downtown. I'm not as concerned as this, and I think in the comprehensive plan, we're starting to distinguish between downtown and uptown and you know, east side, west side, or whatever, but in downtown, I do have a little bit of concern. I have no concern with this club, just very young. It just, sometimes things get passed and you don't, you can't always see what's coming in the future and then you say, why did those people do that? Why did they pass it? So I want to make sure that we're looking at all of the implications before we, before we approve. I think there's some way to work through, even if it's a special.
They have a lot of use. And it shouldn't be like this.
It's not, for this, it's not my concern.
This thing falls between commercial and residential, it's new. It's in that old green area and unfortunately Scottville doesn't know how they're gonna do it. You know, boo hoo.
And this body's job at probably December meeting is to talk about which one of these Right now, we're not doing anything, we're just listening to the proposal. And we don't even have to do that by, oh, this is works, but I'm giving them the opportunity to see, to just give us an idea of what the plans are, what your objectives are, what your hopes are. So if you have a spokesman in your group who would like to take more before the group.
Mr. Bowling, while you're good, will you answer me? So regarding what council was saying, special use, if we got rid of that need and as you said, Javier, we would go to that because at the moment, that's the higher of the two. But if we drop that one and we go back to buy rights, how do you see that as the town attorney? In other words, it's one way or the other?
Yeah, you've got a mistake, you should correct it one way or the other. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to have, have the way it's presently written.
And what, and what county name is saying is the simpler, there's no reason to go to the special use because if you do buy rights, that's the, there would have to be a compelling reason to go to.
Well, that's fine and dandy until they, I don't know, I can't speak for the social club, but, but you could have a citizen, but it's determined it's whatever they down. It says you're supposed to have a special use permit to do this, and I'm willing to clean it up. You know, and you should want it cleaned up. I mean, in the, in the general scheme of things, it doesn't make any sense to have it's black on one, one section and then it's saying it's white in the other section, you can follow it.
Sure, so we've got two ordinance, one says it's okay. Well, let's get used, let's get rid of that one. And, and that's why this is before it, and, and then we can, you know, that's what we're gonna talk about either next week or next month.
So can I ask the group a question if there is a special mention? What's your perspective? Do you have a problem with special use and what are the implications for you all as special units? Can someone answer that?
My name is Nancy Schlichting, I'm representing this group. Um, so again, I'm Nancy Schlichting, I'm representing this group. The objective of this group is to establish a social club. They are going to have a membership. There will be a process for the membership. They do not intend to discriminate. They do not intend to do anything but try to promote the civic causes here in, in Scottsville. They intend to increase the commerce, which is always a goal in this little town, as we all know. And their goal is to proceed lawfully. They are regulated by state and federal. They are not exactly like a lodge or a fraternity, but they're very similar in that what their goals, objectives are. And I think that's why they are grouped in that same way, in that ordinance. All those groups are very similar and that's why they're grouped in the same way, unfortunately, because the ordinance has them listed exactly the way they do in two places. That's why we're here tonight. We don't think that it's necessary for us to have a special use permit. There is no, there's nothing about the definition of what they're gonna do or what they intend to do that would require that there be special scrutiny for them, that this town council would do if in fact it had to proceed under the special use permit section. So it's our position that we really should be following, following. So it's our position that we really should be um following, falling under the by right um section and and that the ordinance that should be stricken is the one that requires a special use permit. Not only for it, but for those other items, those other types of organizations that are listed because they are somewhat similar. Um, and I understand you're always worried about, you know, you let this club come as a by right, what's the next thing that's going to be? But I will tell you that if they are operating as a club with a membership, they do not discriminate, they have a process, they are civic minded, they are moving forward in order to promote commerce in this town. I don't see why any club should have to be subjected to the special use permit process, so.
Sort of famous last words, I think. I mean, I I just want to look at the future. Again, I have no problem with this club, but I'm not sure that my question's been answered.
Okay.
What is the problem with like, if we say as a group, we're going to require a stringent S U P and we're going to get rid of the by right, what is the issue for this group? Does it extra paperwork? Is it extra money? Is it, what are the issues from the group's perspective that makes it so horrendous?
Well, it is fifteen hundred dollars. Um, it is a process, a more stringent process where their where their activities could potentially be more scrutinized. You're also subjecting, you're looking at it from the potential of subjecting other clubs or or being worried about what other clubs come in. Well, think about the discouragement of other clubs and organizations that could be a good thing for this town, as I believe that this particular group would be. And you're going to be discouraging them by requiring them to go through the special use permit process and to pay the additional money. So.
Can we waive? I mean, do we have the right to waive the money? Do we have the right to simplify the process? Can we make it easier on the group so that we still keep the stringent thing in place, but take away the extra steps that becomes a pain for the group? I don't know.
You can do that, but then you have to do it forever, so you're not going to, you're not going to require a fee for a special use permit.
Well, this is a little.
For clubs or for all special use permits?
Do we do it for clubs and for all? Do we have to do it?
I I think you you have to make a step.
Yeah, I think once we set a precedent that we waive a fee for a special use.
It's a better question.
What what you gotta realize, there's been a club there for a long time. This is the platonic line, right?
Right.
You know, and so it's been, I don't know when it's, I I I I know, I I don't know what to say, but I strongly suspect that 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 it was in existence for many years.
It was far too.
Number forty-five and a couple.
Yeah.
Well, see, I I think that could be the precedent to say, okay, we can wait because they've already have another, somebody else wants to come forward, we say, well, was there a club anymore?
Right.
No.
That's my thing.
Because, you know, you're a town council, my advice would be if you waive it, then you're going to open yourself up to anybody that that something that that was used as a non-conforming use before the zoning ordinance and now is regulated more strictly, you're going to say, will you let them do it? I want to do it too.
But because of this precedent.
Yeah, but.
Because they're precedent, I think we have a case.
Take Airbnbs. I voted yes on some Airbnbs and no on others. There was, I had reasoning, it was put out. Are we taking away actual housing from the town by doing? None of that matters. The town will go into an uproar. Everybody's playing favorites. You like this person, you don't like that person.
There are more concerns about.
During election time, it's important.
You know what? If people don't want me, kick me out. I mean, that's really the reality of it, but um I'm more concerned about the future for the town. If we have one club in and then another and another, you know, I don't know how this is going to ruin up. I don't have that foresight. I'm assuming that this S U P was there potentially for a reason. And it's not just their willy nilly. Is there a way where we can keep the stringent in place because of the precedent? Make it easy on this group to get what they need to to move forward and get a win-win kind of compromise on this situation without having to redo zoning.
Let let me ask.
Can I say something? You all should realize how this zoning ordinance was established. Literally in nineteen ninety-six, you you needed, you needed a better zoning ordinance than you had. So you said, well, we we don't spend any huge amount of money or any substantial amount of money to adopt a new zoning ordinance. So what you instructed your town attorney to do is to take the Outmark County zoning ordinance, stand it in effect, change Outmark County to Town of Scottsville, and that's what you got. And that's what you've had ever since. Where this mistake, if you will, has been in existence ever since the zoning ordinance was adopted. So there really wasn't any thought at all given as to whether or not a social club should have my right or my special use permit.
So my inclination would be to let it proceed with a waiver, keep the special use permit in place. Let the lesser one by right go, right, so that we resolve the conflict. We have precedent and allow this to move forward.
You're going to mess up, you're going to expose yourself to legal problems during that because it's not a, it's not a legal precedent that you're talking about. I mean, the fact.
I'm community.
There, but at some point in the in the past, your ordinance also said that if a non-conforming use is not, is discontinued for a few years, it's no longer a non-conforming use. So you've got other things to consider too.
Well, we also have the the case that we have a conflicting ordinance, right, that we decided to clean up the ordinance after this precedent was set. I think that's.
Clean up the ordinance.
Right.
Well, yeah, but we don't, we can allow this to proceed and then clean up the ordinance.
Yeah. What part of you do I think? You should, based on what you know.
You should, when you have ordinances, that's the law, you should, if the law says A or B, you should go and correct it. That's what you.
Well, as you, the town attorney, what would, you know, so these people can go home and something at this time.
Well, it's the center of the council that you want to let the club, social club proceed, amend the zoning ordinance so that the section which provides the clubs or by right is the one that's going to control and start the process to repeal the other section.
And that's the way I I'm.
I mean, that's, that's what we should do.
So I'm obviously, I'm trying.
Oh, sorry. Can I just make one more comment? And I and I think Mr. Bowling made a good point. I mean, it's the word non-conforming. You guys are talking about um, a special use permit is required only where the use is non-conforming. This particular, in particular, in this building and also the use of clubs is, I would submit, not a non-conforming use. It is a use that would be consistent with the use of a commercial building, would be consistent with what this town is trying to do and, you know, move forward. It's various economically uh um friendly agendas. So I would think that the the elimination of the portion of the statute that requires a uh club and was under to to have a special use permit is the one that should be eliminated.
And I would just.
Yeah, go ahead, the other thing.
Um, I mean, first of all, I think hopefully everybody in the club is hearing one way or the other. I think there's support here in the council. I think definitely, I don't see for everybody, I just believe that that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Yes.
I I would say, again, this is a process, I think the mayor is pointing out to, and everybody's familiar. I I think I would err on the my right passage of it, although again, this is still a discussion we're having, trying to figure out what to do. But I think maybe what you could take home tonight is we'll, in our town council ways, sometimes we have overly complicated things. Hopefully we'll make this less complicated at the process. And so in that, uh, and we do that, we'll come up with an answer together that we got and figures it out. But it, but I think like even if, even if we have different ideas, we're, I think we're kind of saying one way or the other, let's figure out how to do so.
I don't think there's anybody at the table that opposes the project.
No.
It's just we want to make it right for future, for the future, and let's get our heads together and decide whether you don't have any more dealings, we'll just go this by right, or we're going to do this by commission method. And uh, if we can do that next week, great, if not, we don't have to put it on until a few days.
Can I sort of quickly, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Can I ask a question? And I I think Alex pretty much answered it. I just want some backup. I mean, if we're working under the assumption that, you know, we might get an Elks Club or a Rotary Club or, you know, something like that, absolutely by right, you know, i- it's silly to put in a special use permit. Are we opening it up by not having a special use permit to say the KKK can have a general meeting house here? We can have a gentleman's club moving in. We can, you know, like I, I, th- this is my concern. If something, if there is something that can come in and we say we are waiving the special use permit, are there things that could open up legally that we do not want to be associated?
Creating a horrible number of needs to create.
Okay.
You have a problem with, that the ordinance has this conflict since it was enacted, and you've never had anybody, even though it was there until, until twenty-some years later, you know, and uh, and if a problem arises in the future, deal with it at that time rather than worrying about it.
And one thi- one thing I will say, having been on the council a while, every once in a while, something like this pops up, Mr. Bowling, as we find out, like, we should have fixed this five years ago.
Why you did this, it's clear, you know, you know, there's an understandable reason why the zoning ordinance supply any of that.
Sure. Yeah, and I think that's, I've been trying to stay as uninvolved, obviously, in this as possible, but are there any other clubs interested? Like, I don't, I don't think it's a common, common thing. I think that volunteerism is down, as we've talked about before.
You, you're involved in this, right?
Yes.
So I would, I would say you have a conflict of interest, I mean, the Virginia conflict's been or second.
To speak about this? To speak about it?
Yes.
That all?
Yes.
Not just to vote about it?
Are you going, are you involved? Uh, Tamar told me you were in, you were.
I'm going to be a member.
Yeah, but are you one of the organizations of the club?
I don't, I don't, am I?
No, I don't know. It gets complicated, but I would.
I would say, I would think to vote on something like that, but to speak on, I think.
He's been trying to protect it.
I I understand, I'm just trying to clear.
Problem, if you're not concerned about it, then that's fine, but but it's.
Okay.
I just want to, I have a duty to.
Absolutely, I get you.
Yeah, you just can't protect it with his own.
Like I say, I think if everybody, I like, it depends on.
Okay.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, and and I'd say it's going to be a really good.
Yeah, we all have email. If you have things that you'd like to say to any of us, we've heard some people have a question. Please let us know. We do want to make it as easy for you as possible. We do support the um, but I hope you can appreciate sitting in this state, what it might mean for the future, and we just don't want, we want to do the best job.
Thank you.
So what I'm saying, um, if you're considering um any legislative action on it, I need to post a public notice. The quickest you can do that is having an action next week and then a public hearing uh next month and any action following that. So just consider that timetable.
Are we allowed to proceed forward? This is stopping us from, we we have certain stages we have to get to and then certain stages we need to move forward on. Uh, are we allowed to proceed forward at this point?
Yeah, I I think we'll talk about that.
Okay. All right, there is a report. Um, Chief mentioned V dot meeting on the Monday third, a little bit of opinion also, um, party four, um, Javier and I met with Bill George against energy center and, you know, they had F lock day back in September, when September was um. Uh, anyhow, what we're thinking about is the next fall, having a Yancy stock, we'll throw it out, we'll all tell you the date. Okay, so we're working on that already. Uh, I mentioned we were having holiday happenings, uh, organizational meetings. The chamber has purchased the banner, it goes across the bridge, says holiday happening, he's a protector. And uh, the date can be changed, so be using that, law coach, take it away. Um, they gave out candy, uh, America, Melody gave out candy for on behalf of the town, uh, she and Javier on Halloween night. Uh, the lion brothers say, uh, lion, um, we talked, Javier was telling us about this later, the D W R brand, uh, this basically coming through the horizon. They gave us the twenty thousand dollars to do this. And after we had all these people and spent an hour and a half down there, the police bureau said, well, not quite what we had in mind. So Javier and I went up to the uh floating dock and we're working out to get that twenty thousand dollars. We're going to go down to the floating dock. It's uh, that'd be great. That helps, you know, the dock is, it is handy, accessible, but it's not.
But the park is not a handicap acceptable, yeah.
So that's what we're, uh, that's the direction we're going in to see if so we can use that twenty, uh, total twenty thousand dollars.
That'd be great.
Um, Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, uh, I think uh Javier's from the Department of the Department of the Social Resources. So meeting we had the other night, uh, Payne and myself and Javier, Blair and we uh, we told the board, people should say, they didn't vote, right? I did a lot of tire plant.
And by person.
And all of them, this is, you know, it was good on the national register. This work really. Um, basically, that was it for the last couple of weeks.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, somebody contacted me, I think they thought maybe it was a a council thing and not a a chamber thing, but I said I would find out about who to contact to set up a craft table at the holiday happenings.
Um. Debbie.
Debbie Smith?
Yeah.
What's the next C dog?
I still need to schedule work. So I've wanted, in my staff report, I wanted to discuss in my own, um, and then that's scheduled. So I'll share that.
All right, uh, Mr. Bowling, any questions?
Uh, this issue, which is a bit an interesting one, uh, and I've been working on that with Javier and also the attorney. Uh, uh, but uh, I'm finally to show you this, here's the new certification. So it's a pretty, that's something.
But I don't know, there are conflicts.
One, one thing, just to say this, you all know who Nancy is, which is, Nancy is, has been the head for, she was the head of soccer, Scottville Soccer for many, many years.
Sure.
So somebody who's very involved in the Scottsville, very involved in the community and it's nice to see her involved in, I know she was part of that, but anyway, very, very involved locally and led a lot of things.
That was, that was, she lives in Buckingham, but she's had cars in Scottsville.
And she's led Scottville like soccer, I don't even know, you're like.
It's great to see the whole community, you know, that supports the project, so I love that people are doing what they say.
And so the process with this, maybe once the, um, once you've adopted it, then you'll get an an electronic version that you can put on your website, which will have an index, so it's sort of, you can actually find something in this code.
Yeah.
Well, fine, I'm not going.
John, look, you're the man, John.
It is, it is what it is. I see you, you've got some things in there that, uh, I think that you can work on and and basically it's sort of a a good brain one. Here that you do is, uh, and also I want to say something about, I don't know what you do, um, i- as as far as, as, you know, in your lives, other than town council members. So I'm always going to err on the side of caution when we get involved in anything like the politics of interest tonight. Even though I figured Alex didn't have any, you know, didn't have any money in the bank, he didn't like, he's going to get rich from making a decision. But I'm telling you, there are folks out there that will get it just to get it.
Hmm.
And.
Somebody has to be.
My job for better or worse, if you tell me, I mean, you could tell me, oh, this is trying to protect you.
Yeah.
I'm going to try to do that. And that's, it was a simple thing, if you, if, you know, if you don't have a legal conflict, even if you have the appearance of one, it's easy to abstain. It's, and and once you've taken an action, and and this is not the kind of thing I'm really talking about, but having a monetary, financial interest in something and you, you know it, you don't disclose it, that will get you into some real bad trouble. And 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 you can avoid that easily by just letting us know or let me know, so that I can tell you what you need to do to protect yourself.
Yeah, and if I can, if I can just say my perspective, I've taken a lot of effort to not be involved in the club. Obviously, my father is part of it and, you know, my girlfriend and all my other friends. So I, you know, I've been quiet, especially here, I've been quiet, but I've had four police calls on me personally and two investigations, a state investigator and an ABC police investigator. Police calls on me personally and two investigations, a state investigator and an ABC police investigator. One of them found me in the parking lot there with, and presented a gun and a badge and said, I heard you're running a gentleman's club here. And I had to walk him through the whole, so I'm pretty frustrated with this, because I've been purposely not involved in this, but somebody keeps calling the cops on me. And it's very frustrating. Yeah. Very weird, and they're all anonymous too, so I have no idea.
Who's upset about this, though? That's the weirdest part of it, like, who is this?
People are angry at this, right?
Yeah, somebody is angry that this club is gonna happen, and that's so weird. I mean.
That's the, the point of it, if somebody's gonna come and try to do something, we, we should.
So the point is, you have a problem, like, what you need to do is disclose that, or you. You have a duty to disclose, and then your duty is not to decide and talk about it.
Okay.
And that's not even analyzing whether you actually have a code.
Yeah.
Um, to Jim's point with the reclassification, we'll have to put on a ordinance, uh, for reclassification, so that will be. In front of you guys, I was working on a draft Jim shared with me, uh, but that's the last step, after that's approved, and I can send it to Civic Plus. Give it two to three days, uh, and it can be online.
So probably before you're in, Javier?
Yeah.
There's, there's, there's simply the complication section.
Yes. So I'll double, I'll double check that, what advertising plans we have, but my best guess. Uh, without reviewing it is, uh, we'll try to do it in December and then wrap it up.
Jim, is that the entire town code? That's the entire, the criminal and everything. Criminal and everything. It'll be a lot sooner. A lot of the antiquated sections and whatever have been taken out. So the biggest problem you had with the town codes, nobody knew what it was, but where, where it was. And, and, and actually, it had, you know, and, and the updating process was chaotic at best. And, and so this kind of stuff establishes at least a starting point, it doesn't have everything. Anything that you've done prior to, this is October two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah.
After October two thousand twenty-two, but the date is fourteen minutes, so. We'll need to put that on, there's a process you go through, put that on the, uh, website too. But once you've done this, you'll, you'll at least have a, a, a starting point, which you really didn't have before, so I'm happy.
Will be in the twenty percent.
I mean, how do we get our department policies on that website? I was looking at it today.
Yeah.
And I looked at the police department's public safety and just wondered how we get the department's policies. Hold on there as well. Okay, got it.
You're gonna work with them?
Yeah.
Cause you have that gentleman to.
You.
Yes, right, and we have gone back and forth and then it just, we're gonna fell off.
Send me an email and I'll send the details and I'll get something working.
Okay, alright.
Uh, John, administrator, you have anything else to report?
Yeah, so I included a, uh, with staff reporting some items in the agenda, but I wanted to cover some things that aren't. I, uh, first I want to thank Melanie Red for helping with the, uh, sale of the police vehicle to the Ramana, uh, Fire Department. Uh, I included some meeting dates I have, so met with Ramana Sore Waste Authority, Alamo County Service Authority, just to get an idea of what. Our, uh, wastewater and our, uh, water treatment is in town, uh, so that would put out the. Uh, beyond that, and what I have here, uh, and was not covered by the mayor. Let me check off stuff, I'm sorry. So I'm continuing to work with Melody on board on items, uh, been helping out the chamber. As a town stat with a pavilion and with the, uh, ABC requirements they have. Uh, for December second, and then the last piece all includes. Is, and we skipped it during government services, um, but I think you received emails. I have a, uh, implementation plan to view, uh, maintenance or to review maintenance. So I could share some de- uh, details with you, but I already reached out with Bill and Alex about, uh, the weekly and the log that I. For that, so it's under progress and I can report next month, uh, and, uh. Share maybe some details over email, I saw Bill send me an email today.
So, can you, are we still on target and have like some kind of recommendation by your end?
Yeah, yeah, I, I feel no concern, uh, the paperwork I set up to be able to do that, just wanting to give you a halfway point. So you feel like I'm on track.
I'm gonna, uh, bring up something, maybe discuss that we prepare how to do this, uh, uh, I was going over the, uh, the. Employment agreement, and it's been three months and we kind of agreed, I thought we had a contract, I'm not sure, contract of to, uh, review. Javier after three months, and it's been over three months, and I think we should do that. Uh, probably in a close second, but I, I'm not sure how you want to do that, but I do feel like we should follow through on that, on that.
Javier has been out to talk about this and perhaps at our close session at the end of next month.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Um, just to give you. A chance and we talk, do you want to? Potentially push that back? I know the first month or two of him working, he was by himself, we didn't have a clerk. Do we wanna push it back?
This, I think, uh. I think we had it here, it says a minimum of three months, and I think we could have a review, but we, we don't have, I mean, if this, and it could go, there could be a salary. But I think if there's a salary, you know, it shouldn't be delayed, if there's.
Yeah.
You know, the thing I, on a personal level, I, I, I would rather I won't be here next week, but, um. Support of it being here, and I think it's a good idea that we follow up.
Okay.
Typically, the way this is handled, and you can, you can handle it differently, but typically, uh, the supervisor, who I'm assuming is the mayor. Solicits input from the groups and the groups give them the input. It's distilled into a report, and that's sort of what's reported out as, um. As the review, so we can do something like that, we can do it individually, but from a process standpoint, I'll just offer that that's typically done.
What I've been working on, I would do since I'm the supervisor, and you all are, but I'm just doing it. And, uh, I can finish that up this week and get it out to you before.
Well, do you want us to give you feedback and you will push our feedback in your report?
Y'all got into the aspects.
And I think, sounds like my point is correct, that, so yeah, whatever is the right way to gather information, so that. People can get input, it'd be great.
Uh, the inter Alex, uh, comment anytime is okay.
Okay, cool.
Thanks, Alex.
Yeah, I'm sitting in there and bringing up this.
I was thinking of doubling our salary too.
You have a, tell me about the V dot Alamo meeting.
Oh, perfect, yes, so, um, I've been, I shared a report on that. And that, I was gonna include that, let me double check, so.
Yeah, everyone's in here.
Yeah, so it's this one with the map examples, so I'll go over it with you guys right now, uh, for those that haven't had time to review it. Um, so.
Just your, your opinions, but have, I mean, it was discussed there were a dozen or five.
Yeah, so I think the easiest way to, to point out is that we had that quarterly meeting that you attended. I believe you, and then one planning commission, I believe that shared. Um, and then following that last Thursday in between car issues. I attended a V dot meeting with Alamo and, uh, the V dot staff over at V dot way. So what I included here are, I picked three priority examples I've heard from the public and from council. About repairs in town, uh, spoke with the county, I found county staff to be very agreeable with us. Um, but I found, uh, V dot to be very technocratic in their provisions, items. Uh, so I included in the highlights, um, those, the messenger. Uh, I discussed, uh, guardrail in Bentley Street as they were cleared. Uh, they didn't see it necessary to have a guardrail in front of, uh, colloquially the CNS parking lot. Uh, what they said is guardrails are thought of as a assessment between. Is redirecting traffic into the road, back into the road off the guardrail. Less threatening than whatever is on the other side of the road, if there wasn't a guard. So for CS, uh, CS, uh, for that example, they provided a recommendation, there's nothing that would prevent a private owner from protecting their private property. But they're focusing on those drivers and their safety. Uh, I brought up also past that, the bamboo.
Right.
And they'll come. Yes, uh, and I brought up to them that, uh, they'll do a report on it, they have to check. How much that depth is, and then use their metrics the way that it's more dangerous going in, well, it's in, either get bumped into the contract or fall off a cliff.
Right.
Choose your, uh, uh, choose your. Yeah.
Well, let's see, it says, not exactly, you're going to, did perilous come up directional error? It's not repeated state of vehicles. It's just, just fucking get them all down there, peril.
So what I can suggest is, I'll try to meet up with them monthly, because it feels like I have staff. Go in and bring up directional arrows, did not bring that up to me that meeting, I came in with guardrails.
I don't know, I feel like it's twenty-five mile an hour road, not that bad accidents can't happen at twenty-five miles an hour.
People touch you twenty-five. I thought it can get hit.
So Jim mentioned that, uh, right at the beginning of the meeting, so, uh, we'll keep up with enforcement, I would say.
It's a tough problem.
Yeah.
Well, the meetings we had, you know, uh. Supervisor, uh, price. I guess you would have to be too. Did that input have any effect on what we've all discussed and? Yeah, we'll determine that we need, because, you know, V dot's working on.
So it's purely staff, and what I brought up were the, were these three items, so I've been broached that six-year. Plan for you guys, I've been researching, I know, and I've been talking about it, so part of my recommendation. Is, I'll include it is, uh, some direction from councils. Uh, some of that might be conversations you have with the supervisors, rather than staff. Uh, but as in the report, the second thing I shared was, uh, Warren Street and Mountain Vista Road. So, uh, unfortunately for Warren Street, which is brought up to me, there's too low of a traffic, it's considered a rural road. And for that reason, they won't do a large repaving project, but essentially, they'll, they'll do the potholes for us.
I know, that's something.
Yeah, uh, well, they have been, but it makes it bumpy as, as Bill and me have talked about.
Very amazed, maybe.
Yeah.
And then.
A, a lot of the problems with V dot are going to be getting into the county process early enough. When the county makes its plans, so your plans are included with the county's plans. That they submit years before the decision is made, and if you don't get done years, get that done years before. You, you, you're gonna have, you're not gonna get things done.
So for example, um, Ron asked me to follow up on some DWR signs that are a little bit old. And confusing, uh, right next to the, uh, funeral home. I call in, it's part of a three-year program, and you clear out all the signs, so next year's summer is when we'll get to our signs.
What's, I'm sorry, what's DWR?
Uh, Department of Wildlife, sir. There's a sign that points to the Thacker parking lot that says wildlife, and I asked how soon to be. But to Jim's point, these, uh, these feel like multifaceted years, and as staff, I can keep a good relationship. With county staff and try as much with the V dot, but also, um, and there's, there's always, this is one of those examples of more hands.
The county reacts to who's, who squeaks, well, who could be out, so I just. At, at part of how they know their money, and so if you wanna be a squeaker, that's what, you literally have to squeak your complaints. So, to, to, as part of the county staff process, years before you think you are to do it. If you're gonna have any impact and actually get any results. I'll be like ten years ago, and I haven't gotten anyone. Well, because you haven't been squeaking loud enough. I mean, seriously, you only get to get a guardrail on that semi-cliff that you've got when you drive into town, you know, probably. I think you're a part of the problem, is a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, they said, well, if you're driving too slow. Things, but it's, it's crazy that there's no guard, you know.
Well, I'm saying we should have a guardrail, because it's only twen- I mean, if you're. Option twenty-five miles an hour off a cliff, I feel like is a lot more dangerous than twenty-five miles an hour getting into thunderbender.
I don't know, I got a great deal on my first truck after I got pulled out of the cliffside, I mean. I'm waiting, I'm volunteering every.
What they're saying is, we don't do the, the movement vehicle, it's okay, I did a, you knew the one second.
So I also followed up on Mountain Vista Road, and from what they shared with me is that, uh. There was a traffic study in July twenty twenty-two that cited daily vehicle use of Mountain Vista's twenty-two vehicles. And, uh, the county has a rural rustic program to pave the roads, but you need to hit a, a minimum of about fifty. To be able to include in that program.
Right, that's, I'll find out in the next traffic.
Everybody, everybody just take a little.
You know, but that's kind of, kind of true, because people know about that much, and they're not gonna go down that road. So they'll never get it, because if you have a choice, you wouldn't go down a road like that.
That's a good point, though.
So, you know, if we all get together and say, without that, I'm, I'm thinking. I wonder if we just do petition or resume, you know, something in the town and saying, like, you know, we've been, you know, be more forceful and maybe. Submit to any of that and say, look, we've been dealing with this for years, and this, you know, this, it's an unpaid road and. People think it'd be a great road to go down, I do it when I ride a bike, and I hate it. But anyway, I just wonder if there's a way we can get. I think it's sort of need to live on the gravel road.
Yeah.
But you might, like, I'd be, even if I did it there, I would still be at the, about getting that section paid. Because it just doesn't need to go about.
So it's washing out.
Um, so the easy ones are always maintenance, so I'll, gotta work order in for the crosswalks on Valley and Main. Uh, those are obviously, um, those four right in front of the police station are obviously getting a little bit old. So part of what I, uh, to Eileen's point previously. Uh, I think the only financial considerations that takes time for me to go up, uh, to V dot way, but I think once a month it merits, even if it's just getting. These smaller, uh, things done and then building momentum on larger items. Um, what I wanted to ask is that I found the quarterly meetings, uh, I wanted to ask council if it might be more appropriate to share. Concerns with me for the quarterly meetings, and then it'd be V dot staff, the town staff. Uh, just from the last meeting, I felt like, uh, it might have been more productive for everybody's time, if we condensed the amount of people attending. Uh, maybe you attend with, uh, input, we make it staff, but it's at your discretion for those.
Do you feel it's more effective with those people?
I think if you share what you need, it, it probably roll around the same as with monthly. I'll get what engineers tell me are the requirements, and then I'll, uh, look at what arguments. What advocacy will do on our side.
I mean, I don't have a, I, I'll take your recommendations one way or the other, but if we need more people to speak up, I'm happy to come. But if it's not as effective, then just fewer people at the table, I'm happy to sit there then.
You wanna save yourself from meeting, you sent me an item, if not, we'll, we'll plan a company meeting, I'll say probably January. It's probably February, probably depends, if I send an email to them, or tomorrow, to be honest. Uh, the quarterly meeting to be down here with V dot is what I'm asking, so that's, that's us in V dot, right? I don't know who I could pull down, and it feels like we're doing for them, but it might be more better for me to show up to those monthly meetings. Uh, with the count, the only thing I could think of without Alamo, Alamo County has police officer that attends it too. Uh, I don't know what your schedule looks like, I could talk to you after reading. I'm releasing that, throwing the end of another meeting.
What can they, is, you know, what would you say if we not start our meeting? What would you say if VDOT staff were meeting with the county unit to? You know, they are all bigger, so.
Yeah, and I could.
Well, Javier is gonna do that.
If I just keep attending those monthly meetings and going through our inventory and hearing out what you guys have reported. I can keep voicing that month over month. Um, they, I found staff to be really receptive, I was on the front of the agenda, so I felt special.
That's just another way to get you out of there.
Last handful.
Okay, revenue discussion, don't hate me. Uh, Javier, can you bring up the uh presentations? So last time I talked to you about potential risk in our our funding position due to economic. Uncertainty and instability on a macro economic level. Alex, did you get a chance to see those numbers? Recap it, I didn't know if you got Javier, because I thought Javier was gonna try to get a few.
I'm elusive. He probably tried.
I shared some highlights.
Okay, so I'll hand out the uh. I'll hand out the presentations so that you all have for your notes. And I'm not gonna recap, Alex, but the numbers in here are pretty easy to follow.
Yeah, I've got a good idea of what.
It's basically most of our revenue sources are dependent on economic conditions. If the economy tightens, we could potentially face a risk in a downturn in revenue for the town. So I thought I I thought about the problems a lot and I thought I'd bring up some points for your consideration. It's really a three part conversation, suggesting that we take a more strategic and perhaps long term approach. Uh, a top down rather than a bottom up approach to financial management, I'll talk about what I mean about that. Talk about maybe aligning spend much closer with some of our strategic priorities, I'll give you some examples of that. This is all just for your consideration, it is, Eileen Morrison, you know, new things. But I think it may be useful before we go into budget discussions. To talk about how we might think a little bit differently about revenue generation. Second part is looking at revenue opportunities, what might be out there for us all to uh benefit the town. And lastly, how do we might we measure some of our um potential revenue streams? And how that get better cost effectiveness and add additional revenue opportunities to our list. Okay, so it's a three part discussion. The first one is the uh table I went through last time, so I won't go through again, Javier, please in advance, please. Thank you, um, it's too small to read on there, but it's not too small to read on your sheet. Uh, we all went through this about different scenarios, you can see the current baseline. Javier and I worked on is when adjusted baseline uh required revenue for twenty four, twenty five, this was a really quick. Uh, span of that. Uh, a case where we increase revenue. A case where expenses increase at the inflation rate that the government was reporting for core inflation. Increase of expenses potentially at eleven point seven percent. And then a decrease in revenue by ten percent and then both, and you see here at the last figure. In the worst economic conditions that I can think about, we would have a shortfall of a hundred and twenty. Cross my a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay, so this was just sort of high in the sky, looking at number, not anything. All budgets are predictions, right? So, thinking about determining desired funding, what we do now is we kind of say, okay, we we think our revenue is gonna be this. Let's fit things into that revenue stream. What I'm talking to you, and that's why I call it by law. What I'm talking about is potentially coming at it from top down. What can we want to achieve and what revenue things might we need or want? And then coming up to the funding target. To say in order to meet that, we would need so much money, so here's a simple model included on the slide. That we would begin with our best projected revenue for next year, let's say off of those sheets, it's seven hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. We added a cushion for that hundred and twenty thousand potential shortfall. And right now we have very, very little for capital projects, so if we want to get signs for the parks, if we wanna do anything, we. Very, very little money is actually allocated for capital through the main program. So if you add instead, and this was the ballpark number, seventy five thousand dollars, you would come up with a total revenue goal. Of about nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. That's two hundred thousand dollars off our projection of what we would potentially get next year. So if we wanted to go down that path, would you say, okay, how do we come up with two hundred thousand dollars extra? Right, because we don't have that right now. Alright, so if you look at the next slide. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so current allocations. When I took the job, and I've said this before, my priorities were uh financial soundness, public safety. And making sure the town is well maintained, well brought. So I use, I mean Morrison's strategic priorities here to group things that were already in the budget. Okay, so operationally, from a rough calculation, we spend about twenty eight percent. Of our total budget for an actual of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Public safety, we spend about forty two percent, three hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. Maintenance, we spend about fifteen percent, a hundred and three thousand dollars to staff and some other things that are lumped in there. And capital projects and others, we spent fifteen percent, but a lot of it's others like. Uh, development, clearly development, there's a bunch of other buckets in there, no, 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 that. Yeah. So it's not really a capital improvement program, it's just a bucket. So the that's sort of notionally the spend buckets that we have today for a total of seven hundred and sixty peg. If we look at the projections for next year. Uh, and say our goal is that seven hundred and seventy seven thousand, I rounded it up to seven hundred and eighty thousand. That would give us potentially twenty thousand dollars more in revenue. If we kept it at thirty percent, this is what we, two thirty four thousand would be what we spend on operational. Forty percent, and I just rounded the numbers, chief, I'm not expecting your budget to go down, but I'm just round numbering things. For three hundred and twelve thousand. We would say and make a decision to say, we've talked about maintenance, we wanna maintain things better. Let's increase the amount of funding that we spend on maintenance to twenty percent. And we'll put off the percentage we spend on capital projects down to ten percent. So maintenance would go up to a hundred and fifty six peg and capital projects would come down to seventy eight. So we're just moving money in these buckets to align with strategic priorities, right? The last example here is where we uh adjust revenue goals for revised percentages. So let's say our funding target becomes that nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So we need two hundred thousand more dollars, right? If we cut our operational from thirty down to twenty five. We would still have a bigger budget operationally than we do today. So the from two eighteen that we have today would go to two forty three. Okay. Public safety would, if we kept it, even if we lowered it to thirty five percent, the budget would go up to three forty one. Which is twenty thousand dollars more than what's in the bucket today. Maintenance, if that stayed at twenty percent, it would go up to a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. From a hundred thousand dollars, and at twenty percent. Uh, a hundred and ninety five K would be allocated for capital projects. So if that funding target went up, even though our percentages would move around, everybody's budget could go up, potentially. Okay, it makes sense, right? But the difference here is that we're starting to organize and think strategically about where we want the money to be spent. And we'd be setting higher level targets and then say, okay, how can we come up with that money for what we wanna do? Okay, so the next slide. Talks about how do we reach those funding targets? Well, the only thing we can do is look at new revenue opportunities, right? So some existing sources, we know, we know tax and grants are probably our top ones right now. We know grants may shrink next year because the uh demographics of the town have changed and it's not. It's advantageous to us to actually obtain some of the grants that we did in the past. So we know that funding will probably drop. Business tax, cigarette tax, franchise tax, these are all smaller category, we hope, we don't really. You know, that's not a huge revenue stream, go ahead, Javier. Alright. Is the business tax again, okay, sorry. Alright, so um and maybe what I put in there is sales tax, where does that come in Javier?
Sales tax.
That's not B-hole, right?
No, no.
So we do get a portion of the revenue, sales tax revenue from the county, but it's just such a small segment. It also doesn't come from the discussion with Melody the other day, it doesn't come in predictable. Stream, so we have potential cash flow problems, we're trying to pay bills. And we don't have predictable sources of income coming in, so we're always having to juggle, so it requires. I think staff to get really creative, and I know that. Uh, Javier is a champion of that when we we talked about Javier's capabilities in managing all that as. Something that's really difficult to do, and you don't know what your effective paycheck is gonna be month to month. How do you manage that, right? So. In considering future revenue for that additional two hundred thousand, again, it could be three hundred, it could be a hundred and fifty. I'm just making up the numbers here that I think are reasonable. There are non-tax based sources of revenue that we can consider, and there are tax based revenue that we can consider. Non-tax days uh would be things like expand our focus on grants. To potentially have point people to actually write grants, deliver grants. Measure the amount of effectiveness we're getting on grants and things like that, we don't really have that right now, we. We apply for grants based on need, someone who's actually strategically looking at opportunity for grants, saying, hey, we should apply for this. So if we had somebody focusing on grants, that might bring in additional revenue. Increasing town events would increase business tax, meal tax, that kind of thing, sale of tax. Uh, to what extent, I'm not sure we could predict, but certainly it would be an additional revenue stream. Same thing with focus on tourism, bringing more people into town, brings more money into businesses. Businesses are really, I mean, they're the lifeblood of our town right now, right, they're really supporting us. Um, and then I'd like to talk about these three in a. Subsequent slides, so I'm gonna hold up a little bit, but. Increase the revenue use of public spaces, and I have a little example that I'd like to share with you on how we might. Use our public spaces a little bit more efficiently. Stronger strategic focus on economic development and working with partnerships within the counties. Other towns could potentially get cost effectiveness, so for example, if we partner with a lot of other small towns. If we have a common need and they have a common need, whether it's for equipment or services. We might be able to get economies of scale around the purchase because we can all choose the vendor. And say, listen, we're coming to you with a bigger pot of money, can give us a bigger discount, and that discount would benefit all of the smaller towns. And so that's another potential way to save money, not necessarily generate revenue. On the tax base side, we've talked about this before, it's come up and I have some numbers for you all, a potential town tax. Right now, the businesses are carrying the bulk of the uh the burden for the support of the town. I think it's time that we look at a town tax, I have some things for your consideration there. There is some, at least. Literature out there on the internet that I found that if we did a town tax, we might be able to even tax CS. For the land that's owned along the river. And that's something that would need more investigation. Eddie, you're a great one, you investigate some of that stuff. Uh, potential vacancy, some tax to incentivize people to rent their property, to get businesses in there, we talked about that before. And if we could do some of this, we might be able to lower some of the business tax for Neil's tax that uh. To create a more business friendly environment. And so, show some of the things that I identify, I'd like you all to think about what you might. Add to this list on things that we could use to generate revenue because I think we're going to need. Some additional revenue in the coming year.
We've got told there'd be a detail and. Have them pay more, they're gonna be space, they're taking away residential properties, they're taking away citizens. Who could be here, uh, they're just visitors, but at the same time, you know, most of those people, most of these uh. Uh, lobbying are pretty reasonable, and we could probably, you know, increase those lobbying.
Press CS excess, um, we avoid the task because we only operate, who thought that, no, but that's our. I understand that they are unfortunate too, right? But it does require more investigation, clearly.
We get a rolling stock, but we also pay them to cut a part that's close to the levy, um, so it's all. So we're paying about nine hundred dollars and then we get, I can't remember, we went over to Rolling Stock Test, but it isn't enough that I would remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I think we could do a little bit more investigation.
Uh, I will point out that transient occupancy, you you could increase that tax, but it's a very small tax percentage. It's 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 blood for themselves, but uh but it's legislative decision.
And it disin- disincentivizes tourists, right, if we do this, so. Okay, so let's go through the town tax uh estimations. I went through the GIS for Alamar and I pulled all the properties in the town of Scottsdale. All the acreage and their assessed value. I also met the designing folks over in Savannah County to get the property list for Savannah. Acreage, assessed value, that thing, very interesting conversation, they were really helpful over in that office. Uh, so I have the complete list of properties in town. So I also, from Lincolnworth on the comprehensive plan, he had identified. Uh, a set of local comps as identified by the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, that was. I always get that one wrong, so finally I kind of got it. Uh, I did reach out uh to these six towns that were listed as comps to Scottsdale. I could find evidence that three of them did indeed have a town tax. Uh, Town of Louisa, the town tax was separate from the county Louisa. Town tax is sixteen cents for a hundred dollars at set value. Uh, and personal property of seventy one cents for a hundred uh dollars assessed value. The town of Gordonsville collects about town tax of eleven cents or twelve cents for a hundred dollars assessed value. Personal property tax, they also have a machinery and tool tax. Of twenty four cents for a hundred dollars assessed value. I would not recommend implementing this because it's gonna hurt our businesses in town if you have to pay a tax on all of your tools and equipment. But they do do it. Uh, Town of Standards Hill, I could find no evidence of a town tax, Town of Dylan could find evidence of a town tax. Uh, Town of Mineral, yes, they do have a town tax at twenty cents for a hundred dollars assessed value. Uh town of Mineral, yes, they do have a town tax at twenty cents for a hundred dollars assessed value. And personal property at five cents.
It is twenty, it reads two cents, how is that possible?
Twenty.
Okay, and forty eight.
And forty.
Gotcha.
Uh town of Madison, I couldn't reach anybody and couldn't find anyone. So if we took that as, you know, sort of a gauge, let's say we based. Our information from Almar and Savannah GIS, which is the best information that we have. The total, total Almar land value minus any exempt properties, so I went through all of the properties and took out the exempt properties like churches. And things like that that wouldn't pay a tax. That comes to about eighty five million dollars. In a set value. We add in the Savannah land value, it's about eighty seven million. So the projected revenue based on a ten cent tax rate, which is lower than any of the comparables, would be about eighty seven thousand dollars. So out of a two hundred thousand dollar wish. Eighty seven could potentially be solved with a town tax. We could uh. This would give us also a predictable revenue stream, right, town taxes are collected when regular taxes are in December and in June. And staff would have, yes, I can count on this to offset any other variables in revenue stream. Tax impact to property owners for a home of assessed value of three hundred K would be approximately three hundred dollars.
But three hundred dollars on top of Almar County taxes, so that's a good dent too, it's not like it's just three hundred dollars.
Okay, let's just get to this, um and Mr. Bowling brought up uh what he called, I think, the abatement policy for those who need it, so for people. Who have uh trouble making this tax, there are policies in place to address that. That we could be consistent with, and we could use this to cover a capital program, offset risk in the business. But it is something that's out there that I think we should really consider, so Bill, your question.
Uh with these two places that have extra uh having taxes. Do they, they they do that individually with their towns, or do they work, so did you look into uh? Did, who would do that, administrative teams, other administrative teams for this, I mean, I mean, who's did, do they have a special person doing this? Would would Melanie do this?
They're piggybacked. It's a piggyback tax, okay, I mean, you could set up your own tax department if you wanted to, right, why would you do it?
So you think they offer Almar?
Yes.
Uh my question is, how much would Almar take off to the top?
Well, they they offer three hundred dollars, probably three hundred dollars.
Yeah, that would be good to know, right.
That would not take hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, they'll charge you administrative, it's not gonna be too much because it's just a computer program.
Okay, that would be good to know, it's a computer program writing you a check. Yeah.
I know with the fines they that they take in, I figured it out, they give five percent commission. On the fines that they collect for us, so I don't know what the tax could be.
Okay, fines, fines are a little different than just the piggyback, because all you're doing is. Is applying a percentage to to the unresolved properties that are located in town of Scottsdale. Unless you located the properties within the town, then it's a done deal, we started pushing the button next year and putting a percentage in.
So if this is something that we want to pursue. We can take it to the next step to look into some of these issues. But I'm putting it on the table for consideration because I think in the coming year, we're going to need it. Uh we were talking about cars that need to be purchased, there's maintenance programs, we're gonna fall short of some.
I got a comment, so, because I've involved the budget all around the government service for several years. And I I I think it's great you're doing this and you're looking into this, but I think it's pretty mature. The last couple of years have been crazy, we haven't had a normal budget for for a year. So it's really hard to predict, we've had DMV, we've had COVID, we've had wasteful spending, you know, we have rocks and kiosks and the tobacco. And then we we cut the the solar panels and some of the sidewalks. So I think we need to see what a normal year is and take a look at like next year, rather than this year, because. We, you know, we were, when Becky was here, she said, we got, we're gonna have eighty thousand dollars surplus. And then she looked at it and said, no, it's only eleven thousand dollars surplus now. So I don't think we have all of the numbers and all the thing, uh everything is. You know, we can look at right now, because this is the first normal year we've had since COVID.
Right, and this will be for next year, right, we're talking about for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, we're not changing any change in this year. The budget's already approved, I just wanna get ahead of that in terms of the budget discussion, which will start coming up in February, right? That everything's on the table and that we're considering everything as we need for next.
I thought it was, that's a good point, awesome, go on, the other thing, uh if we ever go to the stretch, I think it would be good to have a referendum. With the people in town to see what they're, you know, that's on. You can't do referendum?
Not on this, you have, you have a general assembly voice.
Yeah, really. Well, that's right, that's, so we, that'll be a big public meeting, that'll be. Who's that record, whatever, whatever, no, go ahead.
All I was gonna say is thank you for the research, one of the things about making good decisions is. Having lots of information, some aspects of the research can be some aspects that we're on, but the bottom line is. As you do the research, get the information out, it helps us to make options and understand, and it is a process, we we've talked. About town tax, we gotta consider. How do we deal with the revenues, because you're you're right, I mean, the economy is all over the place. So I I think this is really helpful for us to start to really look at some of these comparisons and. The other thing about having. Examples to see. It is helpful today, it might be helpful also to know when you mentioned this one here. About people in difficult situations, you know, it's one thing, somebody who has an income, who's. Has a tax increase, difference of municipal security or their their income is limited, it's a much bigger increase, so all that to say, I think. The research is helpful and it's it's a process for us to continue to kind of figure out. How things can go, we'll have to see how our new businesses do, have different on the end in town and, and so I just think it's helpful.
Alright, I'll add a real quick comment, our. Well, mostly fluctuates in our budget, it's our grant work. But right now, we keep our administrative departments relatively in the same ballpark. So our administrative line ends up looking the same year over year, um with small increases. Um police department the same way, maintenance is has stayed the same. So if you can split those up, you can get a fair assessment of what that might look like, uh you've done assessments with thinking about inflation. And then just addressing what priorities you guys have, be it capital projects or uh or uh new initiatives. Or or eliminating an initiative.
And we're talking about, at least I have mentioned additional staffing, you know, a part-time receptionist, part-time bookkeeper. This money could be used for those things too, it depends on the collective priorities from this group, right? I I would hate to see it get to a point where next year comes. Inflation keeps going up and we find ourselves caught short because. We really haven't thought about it or anticipated anything on what can we do to hedge our risk. Right, so that's why I'm putting it for you, this simply for consideration and preparation for budget discussions later on. But I think we should all be thinking sort of in in the future now before we get to budget. Okay, I wanna move on and talk about measuring revenue value and the like, this is a new thing. But I thought it was really interesting, so there's a movement called Strong Towns. And if you're not familiar with that, it's a movement of a gentleman who's worked with a lot of small towns on how to make them successful. And how gets them to be at a place where financially they are viable and whatnot. And so I don't follow it sort of all the time, but I pick and they, you know, I'm on my mailing list, I pick and choose things that I read. Anyway, um. One of the premises is that land is a a resource which the community prosperity built. And it must not be squandered, uh which I think is an interesting thing, so they're talking about not just looking at your finances, but looking at the productivity of your land. In the same way that a farmer looks at their yield, right? I have a certain amount of acreage as a farmer, I'm gonna plant, am I gonna plant corn, am I gonna plant soy? Which is more productive than the land that I have, which is gonna bring me more revenue, et cetera, and I think when we talk about land use. We can start talking about productivity measures of the land that we have in town. Um. So I've included some calculations that were taken from in their example. And I wanna go through that with you, and I also wanna talk a local example that I see. The goal from a strong town standpoint is to have a local economy support costs of operating the town. Right, so if you're doing new development, how is that new development generating revenue? To support the drag on infrastructure and things like that, we talked about that before. In terms of some of the new development projects that are coming in, et cetera. Um you can have dependency on property tax. But you, you know, that only goes so far, you can't tax and spend forever, that just doesn't scale, so you can implement a tax. But you can't keep inflating your taxes because you end up with a revolt, and you can't go pay the taxes after a certain amount of time. So I wanna take you through a calculation of value per acre, revenue per acre, I wanna talk a little bit, just touch on the light per acre. Um and the light breaker really would speak to how you react to using a particular space. So we talked about community connections and walkability, and I think this this delight factor comes in there, it's not a quantitative. Matter, but it is a qualitative measure, okay? So let's look at the value uh for revenue examples, so this was in Minneapolis. And there was a lot of discussion in the town about. Uh redoing some of the areas that were really sort of rundown in the town. So there was a uh Target uh business that was on ten acres. And it brought in about almost ten million dollars and whatnot, and everybody's like, yay, we love the Target. And there was a a a less, like a more rundown section of town, an older section of town. They compared it to a little taco shop that was in the the, you know, rundown, older section. And what was interesting when they went through the numbers is that. The Lake Creek Target was assessed at about nine million dollars and paid three hundred sixty five thousand dollars in taxes. The building at the Taco Taxi uh was assessed at two hundred ninety five thousand and paid eleven thousand dollars in taxes. So if you looked at the value per acre of both of those properties. The value per acre was actually higher in that property that was. The rundown section of town that they wanted to get rid of, so they were generating on a per acre basis. A lot more revenue than what the Target was generating, and the reason for that, part of the reason for that is Target had huge parking. So as part of that ten acre acreage, that wasn't generating any revenue, right, so the Target itself was generating revenue. But all of those acres that went for the parking lot were doing nothing for the town. And so I started to think about some of the properties in our place. Like Kevin Quip brought a property to mine, right, on the Popper Street, he said, here's an empty lot, I'm gonna put some buildings in here. And potentially generate revenue for the town, so the increase. Potentially hits value per acre and certainly the revenue per acre that the town would get. So if we look at uh a local example, I would consider, this is just one of the reasons, yeah. The Dancy property up of the Irish Road, where the Dancy might follow. To the Dancy family, I'm using, it was a great example, not a bad example. So um there's two parcels there for the two GIS. And the first parcel has a building on it, there's a business in it, and there's other uh buildings that are rented out, and so it generates some revenue. But there was a whole parcel here in the front on Irish Road, that you're probably all familiar with, right across from the food line. That occasionally, I think, you know, it's had a poor rent sign, you can rent this property. Um uh craft fairs would occasionally rent the property, uh flea markets would occasionally rent the property. But then now, he, you know, he or someone there looked at the property and say, how can I generate more revenue per acre? Right, I bring in sheds and I start selling sheds in that property. Well, there's sales tax off of those sheds that the town will. You know, benefit from. Then there's a little corner, somebody approaches them, can we put a little fruit truck in here? They pay for the electricity and they put a little fruit truck, that generates revenue. So the revenue per acre for this property goes up, right, and benefits the town. So I thought, is there or are there opportunities for us collectively? To look at empty properties in town and start working proactively with property owners. With business owners, with developers. To see how much value we can get from these properties as a town. We can also look at our own town properties, for example, Farmer's Market, right? We use it one day a week, for the most part, during the growing season. From what, April to the end of October, something like that. But what are the other opportunities to generate revenue from that property? That we can potentially think about and bring in? Are there classes that could be held, are there, you know? What are the other ideas that we might have to make better use of our revenue sources? Right, we have Bruce Park that sits there, we have other things that sit there downstairs, yeah. So where can we look for revenue opportunities strategically? That might make up a differential in that two hundred thousand dollar shortfall. I think we have a lot of smart people around the table, we have a lot of smart people in the community. It would take some outreach, I think, on our part, working with developers, working with property owners to say, hey, how can we do this? Right, to the benefit of the town, now um. I know that there's been questions about. Um Target Field, what that's gonna do, there's been questions, positive or negative about East Village. I think now is a time for us to talk to those owners. The business owner of Target Field, the developer for East Village, to say, is there a way we can come together and increase the revenue for the town? What are those opportunities? Um the other thing I will say about the delight factor is something that we consider in uh. Planning, and if you think about, the last time you went into a place, either a business. Or a town, or you traveled through some place and you say, wow, this place is really cool, right, I love this place, I wanna come back to you, like. That's sort of a quantitative measure of delight, right, that sticks in your memory, you wanna come back. If we're, you know, if people are asking for zoning approvals, if they're asking for other things. I think we can be asking the questions of, how does this contribute to that sense of delight for the town? What's getting improved, what actually benefits tourism, benefits visitors and things like that? So value per acre, revenue per acre, delight per acre, these are new things that we haven't really, at least I haven't heard us talk about. And I think perhaps we can include them in some of the discussions going forward. Um I won't go through the conclusions, but they're basically stating uh some of the things that are listed in the essence of town. Um so basically, I think we should consider a different approach, like a top down or a bottom up. Seriously, consider a town tax. And start actively working with partners and looking at our own town property to optimize revenue opportunities for the future. So that's my issue, I'll never.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, is uh Lincoln on? Yes, Lincoln is one of the what, I. You're not, but it's not all done, it's still Lincoln.
But not ob, but not obligated to fuck.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Call Lincoln to the screen.
Let me shoot one of my screens over, Lincoln. You're set now on our side.
Okay, you can see my agenda slide? Great, okay. Well, thanks, Ms. Morse, I really enjoyed your presentation, especially the Target versus Tacos. I learned something new there. I think that's a really good example, and has a lot of ties to the comp plan. But uh, good evening, everyone. Apologies, I had class tonight, so I'm still at the architecture building at U V A. But glad to join you via Zoom. Um, my last presentation with you was on September eleventh, so about two months ago. But I'd just like to quickly uh recap the community engagement activities for the comp plan, recap the principles and goals, and then talk a little bit about the remaining work schedule. I'll go quickly, I understand you have the printed uh slides in front of you too. So we've had six uh engagement activities with the community so far. First, we had four workshops, and then we had two focus groups. The intent of the workshops was more open-ended, gathering ideas. The focus groups was, was more focused, of course, and we actually had activities, uh putting stickers on the map. For instance, walkability, talking more about details of housing. So I'll just go uh through two of the more, more recent events that we had um since I presented to you. So we had the Enabling Growth Workshop, and uh this was on September thirtieth. And we got a broad range of feedback, but I'll just go through some of the highlights. Uh, you know, the town is really an asset as a regional hub. Growth means more than just new housing. Uh, we heard other words that could be replaced by growth, uh revitalization, vibrancy, healthy, purposeful, infill development, greenfield development. And then most importantly perhaps was, you know, different types of growth could be good for different places in town. And this is where we started talking about this idea of neighborhoods and designating areas of town. We hear a lot about uptown and downtown, but people have also talked about midtown. And even the somewhat new term that I've heard is riverside over in Fluvanis. So, um, I know Mr. Gritzko was talking about this at the planning uh commission meeting last week, but this might be something we, we consider further. Neighborhood approach. I'll just keep rolling. Um, we also had the Business Community Roundtable. This was quite well attended, ten persons, uh two planning commissioners and one town counselor. And uh, the, the business community really wants to reinforce the historic charm and architecture of the town. They also want to organize more events and have more regular activities. They talked about parking is hard to find for visitors, and maybe it's not a question of how much parking there is, but more about signage for parking. Um, someone was talking about home-based businesses, really encouraging that. Um, then they veered discussion into the business costs. And besides the taxes, uh they're really talking about inflation and the, the, the cost of food and other things. So the taxes were not necessarily one specific item that they had concern about, but it's overall their business costs have increased. But one item they thought that they could partner with the town and really everyone could have a win-win would be improved communication and maybe joint advertising events. And then look for more partnership opportunities and coordination with the town. So I think this really pairs well with what Ms. Morse was just talking about. You know, enabling business on, on land, so on so forth, yeah. I'll just keep rolling. Uh, we had a walkability focus group, and I think this was for me to highlight of our engagement. Uh, people got quite excited. Uh, we had one town council and two planning commissioners there. And uh, you know, the, the key message I heard was trails are a huge asset for the town. Could you consider a theme? And I just quickly added the word delight here, because this is a really good example of how the town could create more delight. You know, everyone's already pretty happy with the themes um of trails, but someone was proposing, you know, you know, horses are, you know, quite popular around town. Could you create a horse-themed trail system? Or another town in, in Virginia has gotten a lot of popularity, uh Charles City, they have motorbike theme. This is just one example of potentially creating delight. Another uh strong, you know, suggestion at the event was you really focus on trail easements a- across more land that might be developed in town. Um, Ed from Esmond Community Center, he was really talking about uh potential, this future rail trail that Esmond's been talking about, how to connect to that. Uh, we talked about the regions of town, and then also again, besides the infrastructure, I think everyone knows about, you know, the possibility of further sidewalks or trails. There was a lot of talk about just signage could improve a lot of things. You can see this diagram in the upper right-hand corner that uh Lisa, the planning commissioner, uh kind of created. She was the scribe that day, but really focusing on the junction between infrastructure and community connections. How can we create that sweet spot for people? Housing focus group, uh we had five attendees, but only two people from the public, and it was a husband-wife. And I'd attribute this to, you know, the, some folks might, might have a little bit of fatigue from our engagement. And I, I, I see that as maybe positive. Maybe they've come, we have some frequent flyers, and they've said their, their words, and they, they trust the process perhaps. Um, and we've had a variety of different events on different days, uh including a lot of Saturdays. So I think we've done quite a good effort in, in engagement. But in terms of housing, we, we really heard um that partnerships are gonna be important. It takes a tremendous amount of know-how and effort by staff to really focus on housing grants. So maybe we need to partner more with local nonprofits in either Albemarle or Fluvana to really enable housing choices. Uh, we, we talked about, you know, maybe enabling more ADUs, accessory dwelling units that are by right. You're working on the zoning, getting a grant for the zoning to really uh focus on how we can make the zoning uh more palatable to existing landowners. And then one of the public attendees really started to focus on the environment. You know, the land in the northeast of the town has a lot of streams. There could be a, a lot of slopes there, there could be a lot of runoff. How can we really protect the environment and our watershed? Through our town code, so on so forth. Just keep rolling. The, these are the groups we've engaged. You can see a lot of names on the slide. Uh, most importantly, we've engaged with individuals. We engaged with uh quite a few businesses, you can see the names there. Uh, Muddy Paws is a new business, for instance, in uh Buckingham County, a new winery themed around uh dogs and pets. But they wanted to come and, and introduce themselves and get involved. Um, we uh interacted with nonprofits, including uh Stevie from Scan, uh James Exchange, of course. Advertisements in uh Scottsville Monthly. We've done a lot of government reach out and also engagement events. Planning commissioners went to Farmer's Market on Saturdays and soccer games. Okay, we have a few remaining groups to engage. Um, Mr. Gritzko had an excellent idea of engaging youth. So you can see this picture of my daughter. She really enjoys coming to the meetings and banging the gavel afterwards. And um even Melody, she uh invited someone up during Halloween to use the bathroom. And this was a young boy that really started asking a lot of questions, oh, what, what goes on here? So we got the idea of maybe inviting the Scottsville Elementary School, a, a group, and maybe Boys and Girls Club to come. And uh, you know, have an engagement event with us. Talk to them about what's the future of the town they want. And then we need to have a few follow-up dis- discussions with some jurisdictions. Okay, uh, just to quickly move on, I just have a few more slides. Uh, the principles and goals approach, we're gonna, the planning commission's proposing to move forward on this, so I'm recommending that I write up a summary of this and then have individual pages talking about each principle and goal. And in the upper right-hand corner, just to let you know, Javier and I made a short lightning talk presentation to a, a conference at U V A about three weeks ago. And uh, some of the attendees, thi- this was all about collaborative governance, uh they got really excited about Scottsville and the efforts on the comp plan, especially this principles and goals approach. So a professor from New Hampshire ran up to us after the event and really wanted to talk more, cause this uh kind of mirrors some of the efforts she's had in her book. So we, we've gotten positive feedback on this. Okay, just uh three slides on the scheduling. Uh, this is the November calendar. We already had the planning commission uh meeting last week, we have the work session today. And we're gonna focus on youth engagement, hopefully the week after Thanksgiving or maybe early December. December, we had the planning commission meeting, and then Javier and I are gonna really sit down and do uh writing and, and, and discussion. And I, and this works best for me, because uh that's when my class is in, I can really focus for two weeks. Then we'll have that draft by the end of December. Uh, I'm also uh recording a podcast with uh Ms. um Nancy Gill on eleventh December, just to explain the comp plan process of, you know, why the town is having comp plan, talking about the engagement, what was heard, and some of the considerations. And this is just another outreach to keep uh everyone informed. Uh, the maps, uh we will continue to work on the maps. These will need some time, uh because as I highlighted in the previous meeting, um the current zoning map does not show accurate boundary on the Fluvana side or on the riverside, uh I suspect. January, uh the planning commission meeting will be on a Wednesday because of the New Year's. And then I, I would be happy to brief uh the town council work session at that point or any other time. And we can also potentially have this joint work session probably in the new year. And uh, planning commission is thinking about public hearings, uh that might be sometime in January or a little bit later. That's all that I have for today. Uh, glad to answer any questions.
All good.
Thanks so much, appreciate it all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lincoln.
I did have one comment, though. I think it would be nice to, you know, given what I presented, what Lincoln has just presented. I would like to have a, a session starting some of these partnerships. I had thought about having it a work session, but in a separate session, a better place to do that, what do you often?
Starting some part.
Like, having people who have this, you know, similar thoughts about increasing partnerships, increasing events, increasing revenue, increasing, to have that kind of synergy. Some of our, you know, our developers, our business partners, the people from Target Fuel. Get them all in a room and start brainstorming about some of these issues about revenue and how can we help them? How can they help the town? What's the best?
I think, to be perfectly honest with you, I get a lot of annoyance that the town, the businesses are the biggest source of revenue that we have, and they have zero say in anything. And I always try to explain that it is not us, we would love for you guys to have a say, you know, it's the county, you know, the, the state, you know, on a, on a state level, you know, the business don't have a vote. I don't know how much they would come in. If, if we said, hey, you're already giving us more money than anybody else, come to a meeting and sit for six hours and talk about what you can do to bring us more money? I don't know that we're gonna get a good turnout for that.
Not what they can do, but what we can collectively do.
Yeah.
It's like Lincoln just talked about having more events and having things more coordinated. I cited that on my chart as potential revenue stream. How can we help them? Right? How can we help them be effective to have more events? How can we be more coordinated and how do we have events for the town?
Oh, okay, well, but that's different than the ask, I, I misunderstood what you were saying. I thought you wanted business owners to come in and see how we could. Well, and that's a goal too, that's already happening with different organizations that wanna have events, you know, coming together quarterly to.
December second is all that we have.
Right.
Okay, into town, chambers all working together, bringing people to town, sending money. David, Christmas tree lighting, we got things going on, nine, October, sale, it's on, it's late.
Yeah.
Right, and that, but that's one that we typically have, you know, I find they have the, out of the.
That's why we're having the quarterly meetings with a member of town council, a member of the chamber, a member of the pastors council, a member of the Lions Club, I mean, you know, uh all of these, a member of Scan to, everybody has event plans that they think are too much and too overwhelming and everything else. Um, what can we do? Like, say Scan wants to do something, but what they really need is for council and chamber to help. Or the pastors council wants to do something, but they really need, you know, maybe the Lions Club to help, you know what I mean? So that, that's already happening, those court.
But there's still seem to be, but that's a we're not coordinated, we're not talking, we need help. Um, and I like to put some of these ideas in front of a larger group to get their thoughts on how we generate more revenue for the town. Um, we can do it a work session, but that's gonna take up our work session. I'm not sure that's exactly the requirement. Do we need a special session? Do I just need to hold it on my own and go to the chamber?
Tehran's recommendation, maybe a, a council member uh leads a meeting to collect these groups, makes it a quarterly meeting. Uh, and that would be a good way to communicate, they could report back to the council, and then that would provide me any direction, thinking about our side, any direction you need.
I'm gonna steer that. I mean, I don't mind organizing and doing these things, but I.
I just feel like maybe if you wanna piggyback on mine, I would yours be a business owners meet? I'm, I'm confused about what you're talking about with like events and stuff.
Well, on this list, there were a number of potential sources of revenue, but that's with Jeff Blom. Making better use of our spaces was another. New opportunities for revenue was another. Somebody may say, hey, I'd love to hold a class on X, Y, Z. Where can I hold a class, right? So it's these kinds of things that I want to explore with people, right? So it's more broad than events. And so, I mean, maybe you can reach out to your group that you go to and say, hey, you know, we talked about different circles of revenue, we talked about new opportunities in the town, increasing tourism, increasing events. What's the best venue for you all, where we can have this? And then I can reach out to business partners or other, and get everybody in a room to talk about this. So I'll follow up with you then, Mary.
Okay.
I think.
So I included in uh, in our staff report, a staff briefing on last meeting from October ninth. Uh, I also sent out an email that I wanna confirm if everybody's been able to read that email that I shared with town council about the um public hearing for, from D W R Department of, uh, oh, sorry, D H R, Department of Historic Resources uh on the tire fourth plant and national register. So if you look at my overview, uh this is part of a grant that I mentioned in the email that can be in that grant, that was approved. Uh, that the town was approved for in September twenty twenty-two. I included the contract that got signed in your uh staff report for you guys, so you can review and have a little bit of details on it. Um, in case uh it hasn't been reviewed by a staff member or by the council. Um, beyond that, Commonwealth Preservation Group who were present here with D H R held a public hearing meeting on that tire core uh plant factory national registration. Uh, so on that side, the most important thing that has been since holding it this new calendar year is that with all the staff changes, I'm catching up on the grant work and reimbursement. Um, uh, uh, the chief left, but the USDA facility franchise is example, and this is an example of delays on grant reimbursement. So that's what Becky talked about previously, about us seeing a surplus is technically us just catching up. Uh, beyond that, I need to report out now that I received deliverables, which include uh all this stuff here. Um, and we held a November ninth meeting. I think the highlights are probably the most important thing, so we keep this meeting short. Uh, the signable application is in the back of the office, filed away. Uh, I've reached out to both owners. Naturally, nobody's interested in discussing with me the interest in the national reg, uh, uh, in the in the national, in the register. In the acknowledgement of it in the national registers nomination. Um, I have uh shared a council copy of the contract with Commonwealth Preservation Group. Cause one of the questions I had, are we gonna spend any more money on this? We have spent all the money on it. We've done the invoices, it's literally recorded back now. Uh, beyond that, I'll need to take time to do grant completion for reimbursement. It's gonna be about twenty-seven thousand that I'm waiting back on. We've already invoiced uh earlier in this calendar year, it was just getting it back. Uh, one highlight I gave to council is that, uh, let's see, where did I put it? A proposed solution, I need to follow up with Virginia Housing about the grant, and the second thing is town staff as a form of council, right? A proposed solution, I need to follow up with Virginia Housing about the grant, and the second thing is town staff as a form of council, recommend. That application being filed away, the action will be taken further on that application by town staff. Uh, no action without council approval, so we'll put it to bed and get our money back.
What's the benefit of being on the registry? Instead of like, you would get developing grants or you can.
So the original intention was to use the historic tax credits, that was discussed during, uh. Now, I think if you aren't approaching that, it actually becomes sometimes a hindrance.
Yeah, right.
Uh, this is a unique case in where we were using feasibility grant from Virginia Housing. To try to answer some of those questions that the market doesn't answer for you. But we're sitting on a, a prepared, uh, report and some glossy pictures and a nice hour-long presentation that, uh, I think. Uh, both Ron and Eddie attended, you know, in addition to Nancy. Um, I don't know really do, what to do other than just get a reimbursement back and file it away.
So you have to get reimbursement back, follow the ways, and you'll get all of that. And sort of area or designation to deal. And withdraw, withdraw the nomination.
So we put in the nomination back in May. It's not clear to me, they don't have an app, we have the application, it's our deliverable, we took on that burden. They haven't discussed with me interest on it, um.
Was they in the vote or didn't explode?
Yes.
When I got the meeting, there was a vote coming down, there's a bomb.
Yeah, but they, they haven't signed that application that I had for designation. Uh, I can, oh, the last point, closing thoughts is. After this, especially because I feel like it's, uh, thin on time, uh, please reach out with any questions, like you had Eddie. I'll follow up with them and double check on that, if they don't wanna sign it and it's up for public hearing, it kind of feels like, um. I'm wrapping up, Lou said.
Those things, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I'll send you an email response later, I follow up with that again, uh.
You just. Kill it, we'll get our money back.
Yeah, well, those mystery pictures, many problems and whatnot.
Yeah, it's actually pretty interesting, the, uh, reports back, if I'll add, add something they shared with us.
It was, it was a great, great presentation on, and.
I'm sorry, missed that, it's on.
Lady, very, um, friendly and professional and you are really good.
So, yeah, oh. I'll say, I'll tell that, that's it for that, I'll share a little bit about our grant when we talk about committees and then ask them later if you can do, so share.
We'll, 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 we'll do the new committee updates.
I can, but I'll, I'll, we have a pickup meeting, I'll give you all, uh, staff report, the data, and that just happened, I don't know. I gave it to, uh, to Javier to, uh, you know, just the record of what we did. Uh, we had, uh. Several members. You know, five of us, one views, um, Javier, but to our attention, I think we're able to look at the next one. So, um, we identified chairman, we elected unanimously Jack Mack, who was the chairman of the committee. We looked at some opportunities to get some improvements or synergies. Jack put together a list of priorities that he had, we identified some others. Eddie made it very clear, um, I got the reason that we shouldn't be, we have that real, that there's a lot of stuff that. The county has done, that we should be aligned with, but also there's some gaps, uh, that the group identified that the county's not taking care of. So for example, one of those is, um, when the internet service went down. For several days and he didn't have access to his communication. Businesses didn't have access to their, um. The tail systems and things like that, what could be done, um, and Michael has said that there are things like. Uh, rolling points of access that you can bring in temporarily. So it's things like that, we would be exploring for, uh, situations that maybe aren't, um, obvious. And that Alamo probably won't cover for us necessarily.
But.
You have a report, you can read sort of what we did and I.
Very curious about rolling points of access. Like, I, I'm picturing a cart like that, they used to roll out and, you know, middle school with the TV on it, but, um.
Yeah, I have.
The unfortunate thing with something like that is when we lose our internet. We don't know if it's gonna be three hours or three days, you know, like, so, so at what point? Do, I don't know, thi- this is just me musing out loud, I know, I'm not asking you to answer.
We can get better communication with the, you know, utility providers. And also, if it's over a certain threshold, we can start to kick in a plan to bring in like a rolling access point or something like that.
And you have county staff with you, is that the one?
My calls.
So I think that's a really productive way to start that, I'm just.
It's really helpful, I really, you know, appreciated his input and I. I think this helps in strengthening, you know, the partnerships that you're building, that other bill, people are building sort of outside. Um, the town, it, it's very helpful.
Yeah, I feel like until we get more providers. We're not gonna get better internet, because right now, bright speeds attitude is, what are you gonna do? Not have internet?
Yeah.
You know, like, they, they don't care.
Well, I, I, we met a few times, for twice, and we took a, a hike, uh, Saturday, just to set the trails. Um, we had a lot of great, uh, people who are really competitive and really like hiking, you know, and, uh. Anyway, uh, the chairman is Brian Heimlich, and Terry Long is the vice chair. We, uh, we went over a lot of issues and, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be meeting, uh, every, every month for a while. And then we'll probably take a break for a while, but ev- every month at, uh, second Thursday, eleven o'clock. And basically, the, the focus right now is to, to get something on those, the kiosks, uh, rules, maps. Uh, and maybe a waiver for, for a warning, because there's, uh, problems, uh, particularly over risk. Uh, then we looked at maintenance, uh, looked at the dock, Philip Powell's on the committee, he's gonna be, uh, looking at the accessibility docks, so we talked about that a little bit. And then I'm looking at, uh, we're all looking at, uh, signage, both inside and outside the park and, uh. Maybe I could, if we got, try to get a sign pointing, um, to the, to that, the nature area on. The Jefferson Street, so they know, when people know where it's going, nobody knows how to get there unless they have a sign, so. But anyway, there's a lot of issues and we're just starting to tackle those now, but, uh, but anyway, we'll, we'll be. And what the maintenance is gonna, we'll have a day sometime, there's a lot of, a lot of issues with maintenance. Trees down and lots of creeks and, and skiers, slopes, uh. But a lot of, a lot of good people really like, like hiking, those are the things that are there as well, really nice committee, not political thing.
Thank you, ready for it? And then, um, I've shared a staff report, I wanted to update, I already talked with Bill. Um, about that, uh, tourism grant that we were discussing about a month and a half ago. So if you read the briefing real quick, you'll see that, uh, private mats departure, we received an outdoor grant. Through the tour, Virginia Tourism Corporation, that's Virginia for Lovers, those guys. And they, uh, technically Sherwood Allen Mall Convention and Visitors Bureau is the one who received the grant. Uh, initially, the idea was to put, uh, a kayak push-up down at EWR land. It was not feasible, Ron was at the meeting, uh, that thing would be gone after the first, uh, serious rain down there. Uh, I planted a bug in his ear and said, why don't you look at Van Cleve, it would be a shame for it to leave town limits. Uh, so I did some background, uh, discussions and findings. To eventually share with Parks and Rec, so they have some direction, and also I need direction from you guys on this. Because there was an initial thought on it and I'm not really sure, uh, how much priority you want me, how much time you want me to spend on and what would be the most valued. I have indications for you guys, from the public and from what you've discussed in, uh, strategic planning, of different priorities council has had and the public. So if you share this, I, I suggested some plan D's with Van Cleve in the highlights, well, my proposed solution is that. We're limited by the grants, the first year of the grant, and it's pretty restrictive grant requirements. I shared those grant requirements with this brief and I asked you guys to review them. Uh, you're limited, you can't do capital projects with it, so that limits some of the interest I've heard from town council.
Uh huh.
Uh, but what I was gonna, essentially, my proposed solution was to share this information with Parks and Rec. Ask that they assess the values of the town and town council and come back with a few recommendations. That we could share with the Virginia Tourism Commission, because as much as, as it's your priorities, I'm also hearing what. The commission is interested in as a grant tour, so it's that little tango you always have with grant.
Right.
Uh, so I have looked preliminary into the idea of, uh, of doing some leveling or gravel placement on the trail to the fishing dock. So there's the trail, there's no access, and then there's a, uh, a gangway. That has a drop-off, which is another issue to the dock, as, as.
More advanced.
Um, so another one I had a thought was, uh, informational plaque that could be changed out quarterly from the kiosks. So we actually get some use out of the kiosks, and then I need to reach out with my limited time I had today, I wasn't able to. To ask about what they mean by advertising and see if there's any possibility with that. Virginia Tourism Commission has been really clear with me that anything related to accessibility is of the most interest to them. So that, that kayak push-off was an accessibility, uh, question. Uh, and then that's why I mainly thought about Van Cleve, because there was accessibility concerns there. I've met with, uh, community members who have given me a little bit of guidance, because this is the first thing to be. To start really trying to address accessibility, so, um, um, met with Patrick and then I need to, we need to draw them, but, and our issues.
Uh, I mean, you're just, just, that, right, but they, yeah, so in the many meetings over like about. Second or third year with this Department of Wildlife Resources, because we always had. That location in, I think, they arrived at that location to put it in that spot. There was an intention always to have accessibility down, and I think if it's followed through, Robin. Glad we're talking to him, because he's, Robin, that's, we love Virginia Sportsman, that guy, too. He's been involved before, that same fellow, they bring a knowledge with acceptability that we didn't have. So when we first did the first master plan, we did not have the knowledge that Robin brought later. Which we updated in the next master plan, which was really based off of what Robin brought, so it was really helpful. So anyways, I think it's great to have that, that sort of.
I ask you all right now.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if it's, it's a cattle food problem, but one of the things that came up then at the boat landing, is that people talking about, we should, I'm not sure. Yeah, but that pillar then, can that be renovated? And can that, can we put Scottsville on there and can we mark where the, uh, where the floods were? I think that would be a great, uh. Or, I mean, like, we have any buildings out here, you can go to that pillar and see exactly where most floods were for the last, you know, couple hundred years. And, and have some identification about Scottsville boat landing or Scottsville. That pillar is, you know, that's the focus point in, in the boat landing, and I think it'd be nice to pick it up and, and make that, uh, scene.
Um, I shared in the highlights, uh, I'm writing that down, probably share with the Parks and Rec. Um, one of the pieces of success that I wanna come out of this with clear projects though. Because we have a twenty thousand dollar margin in theater, that we don't wanna have cost overages, so I wanna be able to. Uh, really have a good, uh, thumb on what the scale of work would be of any proposal we have. Um, so I'd like a little bit of assistance from Parks and Rec with that.
Yeah.
Uh, beyond that, I need some clear priorities from town council, um, that I can present the Virginia, uh, Tourism Commission. Uh, so they can present prior to the state patent for. And then the third one is that we need to separate this from possible, uh, fixes to the fishing dock in regards to that gangway. I think you would have to, uh, in portions increase the use of.
I think, we, we got a grant for that, we could get a grant for some of that.
Two thousand, it's a little bit thin.
The gangways, like, you might come to gangways.
Yeah, I'm reaching out to the, uh, proprietor to try and get a quote on that, and then once I know that, I can share that with Parks and Rec, and share that with you guys.
We got, we, we do have some money, you can fill it with a part.
Again.
One other thing Javier, I would say, this, with Bill's committee, if, if, I think you would funnel most of your work with. To Bill, like, is that, that kind of opposing system.
And Bill, uh, just for your information from an ADA perspective. The feds do have a really sort of prescriptive document about access and what is required. And options you can have for outdoor space, the, the thing. So I would suggest looking that up, it might be good to have everybody in the committee have awareness and have that information.
And what I've heard is access in parks is not what we imagined, talk about access with, uh, with, uh. Sidewalks, in the same way that us walking down the street is different from us taking. Uh, so it's reflective of that, I'll share this information every day.
That'll be great, Mike.
And ask for the help now, so, uh, council to follow. Last thing, we can get out, uh, late breaking news, uh, our Chevy Colorado's having time belt issues. So, uh, East Main letting know that you can kind of keep running it, but Colorado are known to have kind of issues. And if that goes out, then we have to use our backup hundred and seventy mile, uh, four pickup. Uh, that Matt donated to us, but it only has two-wheel drive.
Wow.
Um, so it was very pertinent that we started having discussions about capital projects. Uh, here's a little bit of information Cody shared for me from the mechanic work and history on that truck. So, uh, what I asked for you guys is to read over this, think about it a little bit, and maybe we discuss it shortly next week.
Did they have an estimate on the repair cost?
Um, I think it's a two thousand.
When you have, tell me if anyone disagrees with this, can you have him start using the, the other truck? I don't think we need four-wheel drive right now.
Yeah, that's.
Can you have him jump in the other truck just to not wear it down till we get a solid price and?
Yeah.
Everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
That's, that's what we've been more or less doing, I got it back later this week after, uh, they looked at it. And I can pick me just miss that in the meantime.
And he has switched over to using his own car to come back and forth to work.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, well, no, uh, there's things to do next week, uh, there's gonna be another town, or hopefully we got up here to do both on a couple things. If you all clear your job.
Have a good night, guys.
You too.
I'm so glad you brought up that point of, say that, with the club. Oh, geez, the first thing came into my personal mind was that, if we, if we, if we take, maybe not possible, it's, yeah. Honestly, since we have both things in place, like, if we just go to the east. And then change the ordinance.